For new entrants CIDB grading one and two. May Malibana trading one and two. Yeah, but it is not a bushing. But it is a number industry. Be reviewed to a period of a two years financial, due to financial implications. Yeah, it is a case that you review all the back. And I think we are had to pay it. Can't try yeah, but that's a different. The council must review the registration of the CIDB general building. Council is a nice story. It's a case that can you register your heart. CIDB. Yeah, CIDB. General building. Yeah, it is more like a car race. Home builders seem to be paying same service twice. Maybe if they buy it in by market, but it's a story. But when you do it, that's a nice thing. Because we are paying at the CIDB for general building. Because they are patelakos CIDG. And then we have to register also to the NHRBC, which is more responsible for the direct industry. There is a story that I heard you do it like NHBRC. It is born a baby car about like a tamala, but it is a movie. It is more or less horrible, but it's a horrible bad way to have a baby. And then point thirty seven budget allocation. Maybe point thirty seven, yeah, you know, and if you want car, and who are you a hundred fifty budget. From what I understood, there's a budget allocated by the minister to the NHRBC. Well, yeah, come on, kid, that's a long time. You got to hear it, tuna, and allocate it a budget, and allocate it like.
Um, that I'm going to ask you to summarize in, in two minutes and then the paper you can submit to those people. So that we are able to give other people chance.
Thank you. So with this point, it is important that we create a financial system.
The material which is supposed to be used to stabilize or protect these houses. And we asked the department to intervene in such cases. To train the main contractors in our areas to take responsibilities for these projects. I would ask- I would ask the department to establish committees that would monitor or oversee these projects and help the community. As such, I thank you. Amen. I greet you in the name of the Lord, amen.
Kalibito, Kina Konti Williams.
My name is Kontin Williams.
Kijwa, Ward fourteen, Kofriada Fort.
I'm from Ward fourteen in Friada Fort.
Eh, ki- ki kalifela kawo ki lewele disbiliya nseki twa tui ona ki bala ki aisapota awolo ki wona rizireliza reba ai, awolo.
Um, I thank you for this bill and I support it as I see it protects us as residents.
Kina lidi suggestion se perifel.
I have only two suggestions.
Kinekeboza ona ebemukubokabano ona halo ya ore. Maybe two of the eh portfolio committee from human settlement inezwamparamente. Is it possible, Moshomo, bakachonohoba dulegara, the committee etabili districti ehret the main contractor?
Would it be possible for the committee from parliament to participate in the committee that will be overseeing the houses in the district?
Le bakabaka ilore, Moshomo nteba chono ho wona ore di tu kelozaba ai, di tsirelizi haka eki disbili baba lueyona, that main contractor, hamo le wona batu chetamba.
Uh, this would be in order for them to see how well or how badly the consumers' rights are protected in this bill.
Yabobe li.
Secondly.
Kinekiri namogesanting, ki wona di foundation itadi RDP, hobewa blata.
Where I come from, I see the foundations of the RDP, they only put a plant.
Ki puto ro, la ele sa intamo no kapo le zopa, wunzo bewa blata, juale, konseina kore, obane wosajikuwa foundation ore. Nkuu enu laoka itala i, ehchonore utize, laoka balore getanya na malafaz, nkuu enu itize, because you are not take it bonore. Di katela di cracka within two years, se di crackile, di balama tata, le go di festre, kabakalore, hutsete blata feela ore, ki santa, kapokele zopa, hobewa feela blata udimu, hawachikuwa roye tue foundation ititite. Kete ona di kaiso zaka te.
Because I see that uh the foundations are not dug, whether the area is clay or sand, the foundations are not dug. But there's this material that is put on top and that is my worry because after two or three years, these houses start to crack and show some destruction. And that's my concern.
Kete ona di kaiso te, kina le zonako, Moshomo eka okachikuwa next time, hawo itua di RDP, di foundation iki di chikuwa yantje, di be yantje formaliso, kina lebo.
Those were my concerns there. I would hope that next time foundations would be dug so that the houses are more stable. Thank you.
Dumela.
Greetings.
Eh, bizolaga, Kimbuna Nazudet. Mbuna Nazudet.
My name is Mbuna Nazudet.
Eh, Kijwa, two.
I'm from Ward two. Namahad.
Eh, I'm a contractor.
Game kontraga.
Eh, I'm a businessman.
Ki rachwebo.
Eh, ki dia takaofela zon.
I do all these things.
Yeah, eh, kinali few concerns.
Kinali tsoyoze, matsoyo amma.
Billi, I don't have a problem with the bill.
Akinabatata libili. I support the bill.
Although somewhere somehow, there are certain things that I think eh before you can pass this bill, you must fix from your side.
Eh, ki aisapota bili feela, kinala matsoyo amma, la hona lidi ntsateki kupanohore loona, kale sakore la loona, lidi lukise bili ebiliye na yamuhe.
Yeah, why ke chojoalo, eh rebuaka housing consumer protection bill.
Ki chojoalo obane rebuaka biliya tsireliza ya ba du di ba madu.
And eh, how mamela di buite buile ngao feela, then ringa this bill, majority arona, haribu in tuekama, kina wona so eh chairperson. I think ote dintzadi into haurbitza eh nago ke chalate. If ever rasa bui dintoze kahara bill, somewhere somehow, otlamelo or call it into order.
Um, I see that most of the speakers that have spoken are not talking to the bill. And I would request you as the chairperson to call us to order because time is money. When you see us diverting from the bill, you need to call us back.
Why ke chojoalo, majority arona rebuaka di RDPs, of which this bill eh protector everyone, kina wona, all the South African citizens, not the contractors kapama.
The reason I say this is because this bill is eh is protecting the contractors and not all of us as South Africans.
Eh, the other thing, renalu buaka de three spheres of government, from the national to the local government.
Eh, ntae ngweke ore, renalu buaka di karo leza taroza muso, hotwa ho nationalo, hoya hotza di province.
Yeah, but haki elela, the way rizandin tokading, in terms of this bill, somewhere somehow, kina wona, these three spheres of government, hadisebe disan.
But the way it seems in this bill, it is as if these three spheres of government are not working together.
Why ke chojoalo, ke tlokalaka issuea di wetlands, ehilenya raiswa ki majoritya di buite fidile.
The reason I'm saying this is due to the the problem of wetlands which was raised by the previous speakers.
Eh, our local government banalo approval land to who di who 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 di property investors, ba tsebanreki di wetlands, ba hutlebaska advisor di consumers who are dieten, direktin kute. Eh, the bankers ona dietan, di tlo refer di loan, hadi ketao refer di loan, house house na maba kenante.
Uh, the municipalities sometimes approve eh investments from outside investors to build on wetlands. And they don't advise municipal eh consumers to to not go into these houses knowing that they are built on wetlands.
Koba tabatawa ehchonoko hori, runaka feela rimu, whether you are a middle class kapao in, haritla ho issuenya builder madu. We are not professionals in that sector. Reslo kawo re before ke builder any structure, tansihu bili some sort of education. Etlamile ngore ewu bulenla, whether you are a middle class kapao snalito, gorhawo ahamo, hasitla eh right.
The reason is that as the general public, we are not educated much about building. So there should be an oversight that or committee that should advise or or teach builders that um this is not the right place to build. So that the public can know and be aware.
Ki tlo etza mshala ka area arona yama fube, eh ka Frankfurt, Frankfurt awa hating, we atiba structures ahau, sitlo bahantje, kabakalore, renali G five engada. But if ever we akotwiling, twiling hutlezi clay, hau yako cornelia hutlezi clay, and you cannot build a house on a clay. Like in that, that keta ngobua ochilo hori, who di, how awa who di RDP di twa from government, retrofu anto range, retrofu di raft eh eh raft foundation, abo fa the scope of where kore. Otlo sebe disa eh raft foundation, whether who bileli di geotech eh kapaha yabalit geotech, whena as a contractor, otlo ya kabakalore, or register to the NHPRC.
The reason, the reason I'm saying this is because in areas such as uh uh Frankfurt, the houses are stable. We know that because there are many G tens. But when you go to places like Dwering, the place is mostly clay and um the houses there will not turn out to be stable. That is uh the reason.
Yeah, so why ke chojoalo, kubatla osayva le nak, kina wona, neke matla ore kibuena kuete lele, cause te dintzadi into technical. So if ever renali educational shop, lena okina wona eh as an individual, nekele motasatibin next, aneva kidumela hori, kilo ya area ye jualo forke ahelwa in.
So if I am well educated, I would know not to agree to have my house built in such an area.
Then rebere tla ho nto who issuea the inspectors, if ever this bill iska ke cholori ki aisapota. Kore, ito implementwa ebere, ki wo manbatlo enforcea mulao. Why ke chojoalo, renali the inspectors from the municipalities, like kibobua holoka municipality waro.
Um, sorry, my other issue is regarding inspectors. As I said, I support this issue, but I want to know who will be monitoring it. As uh for example, we have inspectors from our municipality.
Eh, hurona renali only one building inspector, the town planner.
We have only one inspector and one town planner.
Runali di structures, se tse sebe disan kima foreigners, hotabatla obeya shopo feela, we pehela shop.
There are structures that are used by foreigners. If they want to erect a shop, they use those structures to erect the shops.
And hasimo hurona feela, nationally ishwa, cause the foreigners are all over.
And this is a national issue, it's not just here, because foreign nationals are all over the country.
So if ever rising a capacity, yeah, the professionals, the building inspectors, lady town planner. If ever ke tala structure, renali eh inspector ehwa, area ena leba to buy million. So utlochonah juanghoru abatsamaleka feela aliwan.
The problem is if we don't have professionals, as I said, we have only one town planner and one inspector. And if that is the 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 situation in an area with so many people, how will these professionals be able to cover all the areas?
So from your side, ke tloko ba or government daro, hide share bedintozeo. Hori, area nse so, it's better capacitated municipality. Or the municipality oluoka bali in, hobeli di inspectors tengada, renali di civil engineers.
As the situation is, I would request that the government capacitate those municipalities that don't have these professionals. So that they are able to cover the wide areas in which they are situated.
Dumela.
Greetings.
Eh, kilewa ahulu, or kibiti mitchiniwana meral lebo lahulu nabaa.
I am thankful for this opportunity and I thank you for coming to our area.
Kilewe emisi, limufoa ai.
And I thank the committee as a whole.
Kilewe le community aru.
And the members.
Libizo laga kidumela sude, kidula wat six.
My name is Dumelisopiti and I'm from Ward six.
Dumel, sude.
Dumelot sude.
Yeah, alright eh, kina na ore, retabida ahulu, ai bili tengahulu, mabapili, yonan bili keniyo.
We are happy that you are here about this bill.
Eh, kila, kila na kabayu monwadi, tota mananamadi, te kenele taa huluka ho.
I was one of the members very involved in construction here in Namahad.
Awolo olutunse nata netfano kimusko, ati RDP.
Especially in the RDP houses allocated by government.
Eh, ine utuzabso kuha hanizarjola bilera, arbu anabolikwale.
It was very painful to us as we continued and saw these houses.
Tabahulu manaksheba eh ki chapter five, ya 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 bili, high work award warranty fund.
I'm very happy when I look at chapter five of the bill, which talks about the warranty fund.
Kina na ore, eh 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 ifitli, ifitli kamera ona, kunali ntsengate tsa mili, dida taka kenele amu, because si dimai amu nga trola onore, banga batona, neka juno ba ba matati, baba nka nsa bawele.
Um, I think it has been delayed because there are a lot of problems as the owners of some of the houses um might have the houses falling on them at any time.
The 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 problem eki bonenahulu kore, eh, anerbuale batwa tsa, batamaisa nukontraka, nawakabulela or chelti nyana u.
When we spoke to the people running the contracts, they told us that the money is very little.
Tzooana baraka tchola kano kumbarakasamentia bulenbota, di tini tabulembota.
That is why sometimes they would buy cement and bricks of a very low quality.
Eh, problem eylenyaba, ekilenga ikshokomela huli, ta 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 ta, kete abaya, di foundation se si di tso, bariki di raft foundation.
The main problem that I saw with these houses was the foundations, which were called raft foundations.
Raft foundation u fata fata feela monuwa hau etanwe.
With a raft foundation, you dig very low and then you start to build.
And eh, how to, one hour, twa hakadi tinsika bang ten pallets kaidma foundation ewu, about feet or sixty mm.
Uh, and then you, when you start to build with about fifty or ten pallets of bricks on a foundation of about sixty millimeters, that's a problem.
Foundation unu bili admaslo.
The fa- that kind of foundation is wrong.
Yeah, clay soil, eh, bili na clay soil.
It's uh, and then it's made on clay soil.
Ai sita feela, dia za yuang, ya baris.
As soon as you start building, the structure starts to shake.
Sena tadi kuduwe.
Most of the houses have fallen.
Marabanga batona bana lipa bana lo waran.
But the owners have nothing, they don't even have a warranty.
Ne kina na ore, eke, 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 neki tabi tanga hulu, mona biding mona.
Which is why I'm very happy about this section in the bill.
Ntonga happy neyeza, ntutetika tza bablenga hulu, kete abaya, kore, ki timeframe, ntunedi hawa baju tza raka, four months, five months, maybe hai ntsutei five hundred.
The other reason why the houses are not of a good quality was because of the timeframe. In a matter of four or five months, the houses were supposed to be completed.
Owasa letala, lemichainapa itinyawa.
Which means not even the correct procedures were followed.
Eh, kahulu ma nehaki elela hulu, wona upidi no enforcement yamla.
Eh, and I noticed on the bill, there is a section about enforcement of the law.
Yeah, chapter six.
Chapter six.
Yeah, kapaha chapter seven.
Oh, chapter seven.
Lewele ntsetu tsa nandite, and then.
We are happy about such such clauses.
Eh, le chapter two manana le NHPRC, nanaki ona regulating council eh nyaru.
And on chapter two, we talk about the NHPRC, which is the regulating authority.
Lanaroko panalbo, nmpa tata buteng, mutuki mutu, mutu wachincha, eh, kare, South Africa akwala, rea tse ore, renali eh eh butata boxai, kodua xai, eh, yena ya corruption.
We have met with them, but as you know, a person changes over time. And you know that in South Africa, we have a huge problem of corruption.
Tzoba lemla, biliye namtsomu reyipas, nmpa tata bilinbaru, kibona bava mutu wasepaha, nmpa riataba, kamurbananu khonu, ruwiyeta katingme, ohkhonalukenya di di nan watwa tsi, tawrklatsirela tachelete, di nonprofit organization.
We are happy eh as we have the bill and we know it may be passed, but there's still the problem of corruption. But we are happy that you were able to include clauses about penalties and such.
And then, kina na ore, Moshomo eh, fona gonyetla, rklata mia, Moshomo eh, lekhono kutaleza ore, lekhono ufumana, si Moshomo shavasi, lekhono re, shavalu khono mu, usubutawaya ka, 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 di sector zati ure. Lekhono tola batwa ahambalshaluseza, lekhono batwa ahambalshaluseza, uska tola Mtsomu Rea, tama, nmpa kanu gongre, chbunya ni, chbunya ka ho, kikili untuysalo khonanu uro, napaha, nmpa he.
We will request that in future, you, when you call such hearings, you call them according to sectors. As in, you call builders, you call those in general construction, so that you don't find a situation where we're here and we know very little about housing.
Nmpa rkhono toba hula, kikileka yonana.
But we are happy that you came with this issue.
Lampa tola ormumu, muthola ngoro, nalmumu, lemela haye lisinting, nmpa kabakalana, oba rkhono, rka khono, rkiyela, rbi shanilu.
Even though the time might have been short and we were not able to say everything that we wanted to say.
Lemidahulu, rizamaya ngande.
We thank you very much. Go well.
Eh, meela chairperson, liba mifoba hau.
Greetings to the chairperson in the committee.
Kalibito, Kimtanda Azwa Dlangalala, from Ward two, ana monamad.
My name is.
Yeah, Mtandazo.
Mtandazo, from Ward two in Namahad.
Eh, ubuanyan feela lena bili ki aisapota.
I support the bill.
However, kinali, dinkanyan enekbatla ubuaka zonama.
But I have a few points I'd like to raise.
Eh, point ya bili, enekbatla ubuaka yonana, kiena ya eh di governmenti, unali mechanism efing, akoi kenyapiliye na hutila ka, di officials da governmenti. Baba tswaneti komunitara eh project or dinto di awa antje.
Uh, my question is, how was, how was the government going to deal with government officials who are supposed to monitor the building of houses?
Cause in most cases, utola eh, nkuu ea awa from foundation face, ibe lo rulela eh eh di inspector from the governmenti salalosa.
Cause in most cases, you find that a house is built from the foundation face up to the roofing and none of the inspectors have even come to check the house.
And another thing kore eh, eh, committee aruna ha, hai aweho, haba ahelwa eh, na kitabua huluka di RDPs, haba aweho, haba ahelwa, di RDPs, nkuu ahae twanzi aweka na wkeka kana.
Uh, the other issue is that our communities are not aware of the length of time that is supposed to be taken when an RDP house is built.
Why ke chojoalo eh, because eh, hard sighting material thing, in most cases eh, ba tsubaru na ba sebe taka di foreign nationals.
And the the reason I'm saying that is because on a site when material is available, um most of our contractors are using foreign nationals as their workers.
And ba tmanbatla ahan, nkuu bike eh, te kaltsatile yuani, the following day, if material thing, be by roof.
And those people, when they have material, they can take one day to build a house and then the following day, they put on the roofing.
So ke batla, oteba oru, nkuu en, is safe, gobkaka, niton lastana wkeka kankfumu, taduleka rayo, ne e awen, kaltsatile yuani na.
And I would want to find out how safe such a house is that was built in one day for a person to live inside it.
One if, ba ai neba, neba ru, neba juetua hori, how awa nkuu ahao, tswaneti awefona wkeka kanga, then I I think nabakachonah, who di monitorabon, obani, the government officials, dia feela, mpa katuwaruna, then ibe di problem se salanima, councillor amut.
Uh, because if the community was informed of how long the building of a house should take, they would be able to monitor this themselves. Because our government officials are failing our people.
And governmenti, unato savea, footi chalatenya insurance cost, rejuetua arunali, about nine billion eso claim, yadi insurancea zonan kutenanze di awa, mpa katuosu itli.
Uh, and the government would also save money because we're told that there's an amount of about nine billion that hasn't been cla- nine billion, that hasn't been claimed uh for these houses.
Eh, le ngu futi, ntukwa tango ubuakore, anadi ntuzen, because eh, nkhunwaka, siyana eka etin kwen, awetika ra kontraka, how to atabeniya u claima for insurance? Kimma nga tswanzinga itlima, anaki nkhunwaka, tswanzinga itlima, kapa, the contractor, kiena ntsantingalo itlima, on behalf of nkhunwaka na.
And my other issue is, if there's an issue of a claim, is it my grandmother who is supposed to make the claim herself? Or is it the constructor who's supposed to make the claim on behalf of my grandmother?
Oh, kina lewa.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Kia lebo, ame modula stulo.
Members of the portfolio committee.
The total committeea portfolio.
My name is Councillor Jonas Sekozi.
Libizo laga ki makanstara Jonas Sekozi.
I'm the ward councillor in the same ward that you are visiting.
Ki ward councilloraya, what eneli yetezin?
I'm also the chief whip of the ruling party.
Ki weti ki chief whip ya, mocha o, gusang.
Mafube local municipality. Mafube local municipality.
Mona eh, mafube local municipality.
Let me take this opportunity to raise these issues that I want to raise.
Ki kupanu kama yatahona, or ke xai se, di ntsate nate, ke batla ngu di xai.
But before then, I want to rest assured you that I support the bill.
Nmpa bili ketsa relo ke kupanale, ubulenla ori, ketsieta bill.
Eh, number one, Chair, I want to indicate eh that
Ntae bili koe kubatla o, xai sa hori.
We are having a problem in terms of issues of building of RDP houses for especially old townships.
Renali butata ba o ahay madu, RDP, bakensaa, mageshina khal.
On those old townships, you find that we are having a problem with a question of a change of ownership.
Eh, mageshina nganu ahale, renali butata ba petulo ya bingba madu.
And for that matter, our people are deprived in terms of having eh eh RDPs for 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 themselves.
Mikalabaka le noofumana, or abatwarona, abachonu fumana, maduadi RDP.
And the number of reasons, one I can mention is that eh, you find that eh, the site does not belong to the people who are residing on those sites. Because of eh, for the fact that, let's say, for instance, eh, I'm the owner of the house, of the site, and then I passed on. And then it becomes a question that eh, those who are left eh cannot eh eh have access in terms of issues of RDP because of change of ownership.
Eh, lele nala, blamaba kakehobani, ufumana ore, ba tsubatu langa hara madu, asibo na bingbadis hatze inu, mshala keha mutua akashoka hala, ilimongananu. Ibe basetin, juale, habachonu hori, nkuu en, ibe ya bona, hubani, hasibo na bingbasita.
And for that matter, it becomes difficult because those houses or those sites that I'm talking about eh, the houses are old and they are not in good condition.
Juale, ibaba tata hubani, ona maduwa kibuwa ngawa na, ufumana ore, ki maduwa khal, eh, miha ma imung amad.
So can the bill give guidance to that?
Ka hori, kupahori, keta malawena ifane kata taisuma vapiliseu.
The other issue, Chair, is that eh, monitoring and evaluation committee should ensure that eh, there is compliance on companies who are building houses. And also issue of quality of houses.
Ntae ngweke hori, committeea tata isoka po yati so ya bo ahibama, etlamewa huzabonite hori, eh, la tele, lubona hori, maduwa na hawe ho la tele, tilene pa etzing, le le hori ahantje.
Emphasis is put eh on issue of poor workmanship of contractors on those houses.
Renali hatenla, tabaya, sebe so eh, ene pa etzing, bakensaka hua amad.
I think on this issue, Chair, what should be considered is that on issues of home builders eh, we must consider that these contractors must be penalized in terms of this issue of poor workmanship.
Ntae ye no, modula stulo, renali meho bona hori, dia hita madu, di fuakoto, bakensaa, kahuese nepahalangi amad.
Because they are giving us a problem, because after sometimes, communities are coming to us as councillors to complain that eh our houses are cracked, et cetera, et cetera. And it's not our issue, it's the issue of the what you call home builders. And this bill should emphasize, should put emphasis in terms of issues of penalties to also those contractors. This should emphasize, should put emphasis in terms of issues of penalties to also those contractors who are building those houses. Another issue, Chair, is the issues of title deeds. Can also title deeds be accessed by ordinary citizens of South Africa? Let it not be issues of only RDP houses where government is assisting in terms of that process, but also let it be considered also on South African citizens, especially elderly people. But those who can afford, they can follow those processes, go into legal route and et cetera, et cetera. Another issue, Chair, is the issue of insurance. Can the scheme provide assistance for the whole house in terms of, let's say, for instance, on the insurance part, it must at least cover the whole house for a period of five years. Not only on the structure, not only on the roof, but generally on the house as it is. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I really appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Do we still have people who want to speak? Can we see hands that want to speak? One, two. What clause? Three. Four. You want to come back, Baba? Go and register there. There is no second bite. If you think you forgot something, just take it to the table. What clause? These are the last. You want to speak, Baba? Okay, yeah, these are the only three people who have closed the list.
My name is Bongani, I come from Edenville, Ward 8. I want to pose a question, or maybe I would like to make a summary of what has been discussed. I support this bill. I would like to know about the houses that have been built, but they are currently incomplete. What do you do about the construction companies that did not finish their work? Some of them are taking the government money without completing the jobs. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate the opportunity given to me. And greet the whole house. I completely support this bill. My name is Jabutongwani. I'm the resident of Namahad, Ward 2. I've got two questions to pose regarding this bill. The question is, if a house has been constructed... And when there's a disaster, is that house still under warranty? Another thing is, if the plan has been approved, the house has been built, but when you look inside, there are some differences or modifications inside, is it still under the same protection? The bill requires that the builder and the recipient of the house must register with the said council. The question is, are the foreign nationals still following the same procedures? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. The last one.
Thank you very much. Greetings. My name is Action Tootit. I'm a ward councillor of Ward 2 here in Frankfurt. I support the bill. Although I've got just two questions. I can see that the bill seeks to protect the RDP houses and and those who built those houses. What I want to know is, when the builders leave the building without completing it, what is their protection? Number two, monitoring your own inspector. I also want to know the role of inspectors because there are houses that were not built at all, but they have been registered as if they are complete. We are also experiencing challenges regarding the payment of the subcontractors in the building of these RDP houses. Can this bill include the importance of the relationship between the provincial government and the municipalities in monitoring the building of these houses? I think. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I want to take this opportunity to thank all those that have made input. There are some of the questions and clarity seeking questions that were raised. Amongst us, we have the legal team from the Department of Human Settlement. Mr. Ngwenya. I'm going to give him an opportunity to emphasize on other issues and respond to some of the issues that were raised. Mr. Ngwenya is accompanied by the lady from the NHPRC. So, we are going to give them an opportunity to respond to some of the issues that you have raised about the NHPRC. So, Mr. Ngwenya.
Thank you very much, Chair, and honourable members, unless Chaba Gao Fela. Chair, I've noted five important questions that was raised by the community. The first question, Chair, it relates to the warranty cover and the papers.
Sorry, sorry, Mr. Ngwenya, the ward councillor, can you go and register those houses that we are saying they were, yeah, okay.
The first question, Chair, that was raised by the community was relating to the papers of the NHPRC. And the second one is the issue relating to the papers of the warranty cover and the timeframe. The third one is the issue that relating to transformation program that is provided for in the bill. And the last point, Chair, which is very critical, is the issue that relating to the provision pertaining to consumer awareness, training, and education provided for by the Act. I want to assure the community that we have made a provision in the Act that the warranty cover is not only to cover, or the protection of the warranty cover is not only at the date of occupation of your house or when you sign your AP letter. We drafted this bill to make sure that the warranty cover, it kicks in from the date of commencement, from the foundation, like the other gentleman have indicated, from the foundation to the wall plate and up until, you know, at the roof level. The second point, we have made sure that in the bill, that the issue that relating to training, you know, of small contractors is provided for in the bill, which include not only the training, but the training that relating to different technologies and different typologies. The last point that is very important that was raised by the community, Chair, was the issue that relating to the role of the inspectors. And the critical point as well is that I was happy that the mayor spoke about the issue of inspectors and the role of the inspectors of both the municipality and the role of the inspectors provided by the NHPRC. The role of the inspectors of both the municipality and that of the NHPRC. I want to assure the community, Chair, that we have made a provision in the bill that the role of the inspectors of the NHPRC and the role of the inspectors of the municipality, they need to work together to ensure that the structural integrity of the house that is being built, in particular the RDP houses, both of them, they played a critical role in that process, and they must do that joint inspection together. The last point, Chair, that is very clear that was raised as well, is the issue that relating to the inspection on the RDP houses, the houses that we as the department provide. Now, the bill makes provision that the role of the MMC responsible for human settlement at local level and the role of the, you know, of the MAC responsible for housing at the provincial level must make sure that when the RDP houses are built, those houses must be enrolled with the NHPRC for the purpose of protection. And lastly, it will be, it will, it will of course be a criminal ability for them not to proceed and to enroll those particular projects because those projects must be enrolled for those particular projects to be covered by the warranty, you know, that is provided for by the NHPRC. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, honorable chairperson, members, and our stakeholders. I'm Natasha Foshe, and I'm from the NHPRC's legal department. Chair, I have noted from the comments that our youth has inquired about the opportunities, you know, to register as a home builder, and I want to encourage them to do so. Registration can take place at the NHPRC's offices. Your nearest offices would be in Bethlehem or in Johannesburg. The NHPRC has also extended its footprint to being online. Therefore, registrations, enrollments, and renewals can be done online. and renewals can be done online. I want to encourage our youth and our stakeholders. Please go on to Google, type in NHBRC and you'll be able to access our website. Like I said, you can register as a home builder, renew your registration and enroll homes. Most importantly, the website makes provision for consumer education, training opportunities as well as inspection conducted. For any other queries, please contact us on our toll-free number. Zero eight hundred?
Zero eight hundred?
Two hundred?
Two hundred?
Eight two four?
Eight two four?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let me indicate that we have noted your inputs that is going to help us as we are going to engage with the bill as the portfolio committee. Your input will be incorporated into the bill. But there are some challenges that you have raised with regard to particularly the RDP houses that was built by government. You have raised the issue of unfinished project. I should indicate that the minister, when he was tabling her budget, has indicated that they've got a program to rectify those houses in the coming three years, starting from this financial year. And one of the things that you have raised is on people who are being on the waiting list and their names disappear on the list. So the minister has indicated that they are busy with the digitization of the beneficiary list so that the beneficiary list can be transparent. There will be accountability on the beneficiary list. And the... The other issues on the, and on the beneficiary list, the minister have indicated that they are going to prioritize elderly people, childhooded family and people with disabilities. Those people are not supposed to queue on the list. And the other issue that you have raised is on the, the people accessing their title deed. And we have emphasized as the committee that the department has to strengthen their capacity working with municipality to make sure that they prioritize the handing over of title deeds. And there are issues that were raised on the building of houses on the wetland areas. One of the things that the bill emphasizes is that the NHBRC as a regulatory board must be constituted by the people who are qualified, which means that they'll work with municipalities and provinces to make sure that where houses are being built, there will not be problem of those houses later on. I think those are the important things that I wanted to, to, to raise. But some of the issues are the suggestion that as we are going to discuss, the bill will incorporate those issues into the bill. There was an indication, one thing that we should indicate is that people must be aware that if you are staying, you are coming from Limpo Po, you've claimed a house in Lim... you've applied a house in, when you're in Limpo Po and then you relocate to Frankfurt, therefore, when you arrived here, you do not qualify to get another house. There are issues that you have raised which are of corruption in nature. As the committee, we are going to engage those that are responsible and rectify all those issues. Our visit to Free State ends here in Frankfurt. And therefore, those that have not managed to make the input on the bill, they will still have chance when the bill is being processed by the NCOP. We want to take this opportunity to thank you for having attended these public hearings. And our thanks goes to the councillors, the mayors and the speakers. Here in Free State, this is for the first time we have councillors and, and, and mayors in this, in the public hearing. Which means that they are taking issues of their community very seriously. We want to thank you very much. I'm going to request any person today, Sunday, who can come and pray for us as we close this meeting. A volunteer, please. After he has prayed for us, please don't leave their food that has been organized for you. Omuchau has already taken the floor to pray for us. Thank you very much. Can we rise?
Back up a little bit, let's see if we can fail.
Long live the young person, long live. Thank you very much.